Are we ready?
We're ready.
Okay, the time is now. Six, nine, three, convenient to open session and calling to border the regular Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, September 4th, 2018. As you probably noticed, I'm not there. I have a family member who's in the hospital in Florida. Thank you for setting up this meeting. After the roll call, I'm going to ask Mr. Carubis, who has the eyes and ears of the meeting, to please run the meeting logistically in order that we can do that smoothly. But Jackie, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Peel?
Here.
Mr. Carubis?
Here.
Ms. Price?
Here.
Mr. Rayzac?
Here.
Ms. Demming?
Present.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Carubis?
Recognizing that a quorum is physically present, we can have our meeting. Ms. Price, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
While not on the agenda, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of George Pradel. I'd like to build in a moment of silence here shortly. As many of you know, George Pradel has been a long time member of Naperville. Very big in community involvement. He was involved in Rotary, which had a motto, has a motto, "Service Above Self." That was one of the takeaways from me, from my relationship with him over the years. As bookends in that relationship, when I was at Cloud, we had, we had a day where we brought our big wheels to school in the parking lot and had our officer-friendly days before safety time was around. I also touched at the YMCA, learning to swim. I saw him over the Fourth of July outside Casey's with his big American flag shirt on. Big community involvement. He's a, he's a loss to the community and should be remembered. So, let's take 30 seconds and for a moment of silence for George Pradel, please. Thank you. Now, moving on to the other items, we have board salutes. Would you like to start?
Sure. The board salutes Granger Middle School science teacher, Kalen Masak, who was recently named one of six finalists in Illinois for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. This award is the nation's highest honor for teachers of math and science, including computer science. Awardees serve as models for their colleagues, inspiration for their communities, and leaders in the improvement of math and science education. Congratulations, Kalen.
And I have one. The board salutes Prairie Children Preschool for achieving the gold circle of quality for their preschool for all program in Accelerate Illinois, the state's quality recognition and improvement system for early learning and development programs. Accelerate Illinois is anchored by a set of standards that focuses on early learning and development and places a high priority on instructional excellence, family services, staff qualifications, professional development, and program administration. Evidence for achieving this designation is obtained through monitoring visits, visits conducted through the Illinois State Board of Education. Congratulations to Principal Sally Osborne and her staff on this stellar achievement.
Awesome, great. Now, we're moving on to the student representative report by Ms. Allery. Not Ms. Mister, from Niqua Valley? Excellent.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Ariane Allery, and I'm your Niqua School Representative for the 2018-2019 school year. I'm so excited to be working with you in this upcoming year. And now, I'll be updating you on what Niqua has been up to. Our first day of school on August 21st was a success, and we welcomed our new class of 2022. I'm going into my junior year, and I was really excited to see all my friends coming back after the long summer. I heard some great things about the teachers coming back to the school and the general enthusiasm of Niqua fostered a positive welcoming environment. We held our first football game on August 24th, which despite the soggy weather, was a 27-6 victory for Wildcats. And keeping on the topic of sports, Niqua's Boys and Girls Golf Team continued to have strong seasons, taking home victories from each of their matchups. Girls volleyball and girls swim and dive also took home victories, starting out strong for the school year alongside victories for the boys soccer and girls tennis teams. On August 28th, we held our college information night for our seniors and their families. And also, on August 28th, we held the annual theater rally, where we announced our stage productions for the school year, including freshman one-acts, The Matchmaker, Stuart Little, The Trail to Oregon, and The Sound of Music. For freshmen on August 30th, Niqua hosted curriculum night, giving parents the opportunity to personally interact with the teachers. Marching band and dance formed at Labor Day Parade yesterday, and Niqua will be playing against Wobonzie on Friday night. Looking forward to seeing some of the board members there for the Wildcat win. And that would be everything Niqua has been up to lately. Thank you, and as always, go Wildcats.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the public comment portion of the agenda, we have one person signed up, Ms. Glavin. I'm not going to read our normal public comment procedures, because you could probably read them to us. Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome back. Beginning of a school year is always an exciting time, and I know everyone here is committed to a successful year, so thank you in advance for all that you do. While I wasn't here last meeting, I did watch it online. I found it interesting that when Engage 204 results were summarized, it was noted that the community as a whole rated class sizes as the top priority for the district. As noted, 204's class sizes are the highest of the comparable districts and among the highest in the state. If anything, I think that Engage 204 determined that this community is informed and engaged in all aspects of our students' education, and that large class sizes in this district are simply not acceptable. While I appreciate the complete list of concerns is long and costly, I do think that the district needs to be responsive to the community. I am particularly concerned that the issue of class size has been regulated to a long-term priority with seemingly no plan in place on how to address the issue. Much was made last meeting of chipping away, see, I did watch, at the other various issues that are certainly important, and tonight we will hear Deferred Maintenance Reduction Plan. Knowing and acknowledging that class size is an issue is great, but the kids really need some relief from the negative effects of sitting in oversized classrooms year after year. I would hope to see some type of action plan from the district sooner rather than later regarding the issue of class size, just like the Deferred Maintenance Reduction Plan. The last several meetings have highlighted the social, emotional, and academic needs of students. Last meeting saw several parents speak to the value of having teachers who can relate and connect with students. If we are truly going to place social, emotional, and academic needs of kids as a priority, we can't place them in oversized classes and expect that one teacher will be able to handle all things to all people. Even with additional social workers and mental health staff, the first point of interaction is often the classroom teacher, and placing 35 students versus 25 students in one class is just asking for those most vulnerable to slip through the cracks. Obviously, reducing class size will entail a continuous source of money, but the district must start chipping away at this priority as well as the others. One chip means that the STEM school must end, and those 204 taxpayer funds and teachers educating non-204 students can come back directly into 204 classrooms. At least it's a start. I'd hope to highlight for you all the oversized classes, but due to my own incompetence in filling out a FOIA form, that will have, FOIA request, that will have to wait until next time. I will say that the elementary school class sizes look way more reasonable overall than they have in the past few years. And while I still think that having elementary classrooms of 29, 30, or 31 is too large, I'm happy to see that there are fewer of those size, those large sizes than there have been in the past, which is a good thing. In closing, thank you, and I look forward to next time.
Thank you. Now, moving on to the superintendent report. Do you have anything to report?
I do. Okay, there we go. First, I just want to say, Mr. Carubis, thank you for offering that moment of silence for Mayor Pradel. Our district joins the entire community in mourning the loss of, of Mayor George Pradel. He made a lot of visits to our schools, countless visits to our schools during his decades of service. Each visit was filled with, as you know, his own style and his own energy and his enthusiasm. And Janet and I were talking today, and we said the one thing, we never had to worry about a microphone. You didn't really need a microphone when George came to the school, because he was so gregarious. He was a great, incredible cheerleader for the city of Naperville, but he was an even greater cheerleader for children. So, we will miss him, we'll be forever grateful for his support, and we, you know, mourn his loss with his family, so. School year, we're off to a great start for our 18-19 school year. I did my world tour of all of the schools within the first couple of days, and there's some great energy and enthusiasm about having our students back. Everyone loves when the students come back. Our six-day enrollment numbers came in at 27,274, which is down 413 students from the same time last year, so we're continuing to see that downward enrollment trend that we've been seeing since 2010. That does match what our demographer, you know, told us was, was happening.
And similar in other districts.
Yes. Yes. We once again want to thank the generosity of our community, who've provided back-to-school supplies for over 1,000 of our student, in students in need across our schools. As in the case for schools across the county, we continue to see increasing unmet needs for students. A variety of community partners stepped up to help us get students off to a great start. We literally want to thank the Indian Prairie Parents Council. They held their first donation drive to support our low-income students with back-to-school supplies. They raised nearly $8,000, including a $2,000 donation from the DuPage Credit Union and $500 from the Exchange Club of Naperville. But in total, they secured donations from over 14 local businesses, churches, and community partners, and we're very grateful for their contributions to support our most vulnerable population, and we really look forward to a continued partnership, so that was great. I want to make sure everyone's aware of the 10th Annual Early Childhood Community Resource Fair that will take place 9:00 to 12:00 p.m. on Saturday, September 22nd. It will be held here at Prairie Children Preschool, right downstairs. This is a collaborative venture with Naperville 203, and we take turns hosting it, so it's our year to do that. So, there are more than 60 community resources that will be available to families raising children between the ages of birth to five years old. The event's free, and there's more information available on our website. And finally, we want to take the opportunity again to thank area law enforcement agencies, including the Naperville Police Department, Aurora Police Department, the DuPage County Sheriff's Department, the Bolingbrook Police Department, and the Naperville Park District Police for their incredible assistance with our school safety training last Friday. Their partnership and support has been critical in order for us to provide the training for our staff, and we hope we never have to use what we're learning, but we're working to make sure that we are all prepared. So, we want to again thank them for their support. And that's it.
Thanks. Although we don't touch on this normally, I'd like to just acknowledge that we have Freedom of Information Report. It's just, we received a report from administration, which is a summary of FOIA requests, so that the public is, can see who's asking and what information is out there. No action is required and no discussion is required, but it's just for the public's benefit. Moving on to the consent agenda items, can I have a motion to approve some of these?
Make a motion to approve the consent, make a motion to approve the consent agenda items D through H as presented.
Second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Carubis?
Yes.
Ms. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Rayzac?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. Carubis, can I ask if we might change the order of some of our discussion items?
What are you thinking?
I'm thinking that Mr. Strang's back would appreciate going first.
We don't need to discuss his back.
Can we do that first?
That'd be great.
Okay.
So, this is a presentation on Deferred Maintenance?
Reduction.
Yep, Reduction Plan, okay.
Good evening, board members. As requested, Mr. DePaul and I put together a Deferred Maintenance Plan to address some of the concerns that were brought forth in the Engage 204, and we'd like to go over that presentation with you tonight. Our goal with this plan is to reduce our Deferred Maintenance projects as fast as possible, and we're going to try and do that in the first few years faster than we will in the outer years, that's so that we can catch up to some of the items that have been on the list for quite some time. Again, our focus, and this is something I mentioned the last time we were together, is to focus on the building envelope, the heating and cooling, and the safety of the facilities. You won't see a lot of Deferred Maintenance in the area of aesthetics, carpets, ceiling tiles, paint, and the such. We want to ensure that it's a quality work through a manageable pace. We could put more money and more effort into those early years, but if we can't supervise that work and can't find good crews that we've had experience with to perform that work, we felt that it was better to move that out into outer years. We want to proactively maintain existing projects, projects that have been on the, on the books and that would be coming on, so that we're filling the hole of Deferred Maintenance faster than we're digging a hole of new projects coming on. And we're using available resources or funds from a variety of areas. First, our capital outlay that's budgeted both in the Fund 20, which is on the operating side, and money that's in Fund 60. We've got developer contributions that are coming in. We've got the sale of some property, and we're going to use some prior-year fund balances that we're going to shift into Fund 60, so that we're going to have some money available to get these projects done in the next four school years. So, we, we really felt confident that we could look out four years, just like a forecast, and put together a plan that was manageable. And beyond four years, the difficulty is, is you've really got to think about what other projects are going to come on, what types of facilities, issues you're going to run into that aren't, are surprises, and you have a more difficult look at what the financial picture's going to look at, like when you get further and further out. So, in a summary, for fiscal year 2019 work, we broke it into three categories. The first is special categories, and those are some things that aren't necessarily part of the Deferred Maintenance, but something that we've been trying to work on for some time, and that is to work on the elementary air conditioning project. So, we're going to hopefully finalize the elementary air conditioning project in the next two years. Classroom air conditioning in 2019, the LMCs in '20. The other special project was, came out of Engage 204, which was safety and security, and that is to upgrade our public address systems in all of our schools and change all of the locks in all of our schools, so that we have a safer environment in the event of needing to notify or lock down our schools. Then you can see that we went to the deferred list. This is, these are items that have been on the list for maintenance repairs or for replacement for a number of years, and we're putting quite a bit of money there. We're putting $3.6 million there in roofing, asphalt, masonry, our controls. Those controls are our building automation systems, and those that will control the heating and cooling, and Mr. DePaul talked about that. And then our roof surveys, which we've, some of we've not done in a number of years, and that is to go out and look at all of the buildings and check the number of leaks in each of the buildings, so that we can try and prioritize the roofs as well as possible. And then our scheduled work, which is the items that would be coming on our maintenance under the normal cycle. So, you can see that we're going to spend almost $10.5 million in fiscal year 2019. That's up from the $6 million that we've been spending the last couple of years, and during the recession, we were down closer to $3.5 million on average. So, this is a move in the right direction.
As we look at our deferred list, we, again, we're concentrating on the building envelope, safety items, and our controls, HVAC controls. So, these are, in the first year, we're going to replace roofs that have been leaking the most, that we haven't been able to address yet, and that's the slope roofs at Graham and Fisher. We have asphalt replacement at, as needed, at those four schools. And we still have Phase 2 masonry work at Fisher. If you remember, that was a two-year project. We recently completed Phase 1, which was a majority of it, but we have the second phase to complete at Fisher, and we have leaky walls at some elementary schools. Again, we'll prioritize those and fix the leaky ones first. The control systems, many of them are obsolete. We can't get parts for them. If it fails, we lose control of the temperatures with, within the buildings. We do need to start working away at that. Burkett is our most troublesome at this time, and we'll, we'll address that. Mr. Strang, refer to the roof survey. This allows us to become more proactive in fixing our roofs. Since 2010, we've been more in the reactive mode and fixing the leaky ones first. This will help identify those deficiencies, so that we can fix them before they become leaks, and it's a wiser use of our, our money. The scheduled items there are basically those items that we, we do every year. Again, they're basically safety-related. We have to fix our roofs. If we have asphalt or concrete replacement for safety items, or bleacher inspections, again, is a safety item. Flooring replacement, our life safety goals, all fit into the safety category. And we do have grounds equipment, security equipment, HVAC plumbing equipment that does break, and we have to replace it. The Graham flat roof, as you recall, we did this summer, but because of the way the fiscal year falls, the majority of that money will be coming out of fiscal year '19. And we need to replace a softball fence at Wobonzie. So, those are the projects that we intend to do this year.
One thing I'd like to point out in fiscal year 2019 is roughly $6.5 million of the revenue for the repairs is coming out of Fund 20. That means that there's some pressure on Mr. DePaul and his group to get that work done during the fiscal year. Otherwise, if he doesn't, it will fall into the, the next calendar year, and the expenses will show up there. The remainder of that, which brings up to the $10.5 million, is in Fund 60, and there's more flexibility in Fund 60, because you can spend it over multiple years. And if he finishes a project in late June and July, he can pay for it in July and August, and it won't necessarily affect the fiscal years on the operating side. So, that's something that we needed to really talk about, how much he could manage as we went through with these projects. In fiscal year 2020, again, we're going to spend close to $10.5 million on projects. You can see that, again, we have special items. We've got the finalizing of the elementary LMC air conditioning. That, after that phase, the elementary air conditioning project will be complete. We've also got the public address system and the locks, which was a part of the Engage session, and, and we really felt like we needed two years to do that. The public address systems and the locks, some of the air conditioning, some of that work can actually be done during the school year. We'll do it on the weekends, in the evenings, when staff aren't present, so that we can expend those funds during that fiscal year. We've got the deferred projects, which was, and again, Engage 204, item that came up was to catch up on our deferred projects. And you can see, again, we focused in on the, the physical structure of the building, the roofing, the asphalt, the masonry, controls, fire alarm, and we've got some work that has been deferred for quite some time at Wobonzie Valley and the gym, and on some tiles in the hallways. The scheduled work comes out to about $1,005,000 for a total of $10.3, or almost $10.4 million in work.
Again, specifically on the deferred list, we're going after the slope roofs at Burkett and May Watts. We have asphalt replacement, which will prioritize based on, on need. We have masonry work, it's still. And the control system at Wobonzie is, half of that building, the original building, is still the original controls from 1975. Gym floors, again, have been on the deferred list for many years. Also, the tile floors are starting to fail in, in portions of the building where they were put over the original tiles, again, from '75. So, that's to upgrade that, and we have some fire alarm upgrades that we need to do, and we'll be able to get four elementary schools done. The scheduled work is basically a repeat, again, for our safety items and those equipment replacements that are as needed. A couple of years ago, we did do some Niqua roofing replacement work. We'll be able to attack an additional phase during 2020. And the Wobonzie tennis courts need to be repaired. That would be a joint project with the Fox Valley Park District. Again, that would be broken into two phases, so we'll do six courts at a time.
What's different in fiscal year 2020 is that two-thirds of the funds are coming from Fund 60, so he has a little more flexibility in spending after July, June 30th, and not impacting the operating budget, and about a third of that is in Fund 20, so he doesn't have the pressure of trying to fit all that construction in, and paying for the completion of that construction before the, the fiscal year ends. So, it's a little easier on Mr. DePaul and his team.
Can we ask questions now, or can we, do you want us to wait?
You can ask, anytime you'd like.
I just, and I don't know if it's even appropriate here because of, due to security measures that we're taking, but if it's, if you feel it's appropriate, could you talk, because you mentioned changing locks? And, you know, we've all been kept abreast of what's going on with that, but changing locks to, a lot of people just means, you know, switching out a lock. And I think there's more to it than that. If, if you want, if, if you feel it's appropriate, if it's not appropriate with security issues, then don't go into it, but I, if you can, I think it's good to expand on that.
Sure. Basically, this will make it easier for our teaching staff to lock a door during a lockdown situation. So, it's, it is upgrading the lock mechanism and having them use gross motor skills in order to secure a door rather than fine motor skills, and eliminating the amount of time it takes for that to occur.
Okay.
And that's in all classrooms in the district.
Thank you.
In fiscal year 2021, we're spending just over $7 million, and you can see now that there's not any special projects. We've completed the project, the public address systems and the locks. We've completed the elementary air conditioning project, and now we're working on, again, the deferred projects that were brought up in Engage, focusing on as much of the building structure as possible, roofing controls, fire alarm, asphalt. And then we're spending closer to what we were spending on our average for our scheduled work of $3 million.
As we start to get out three years, it's hard to identify necessarily specific projects, because we need the flexibility to meet the prioritized projects first. However, you can see we have roof repairs at Brookdale and McCarty. The asphalt replacement's based on need. Again, controls. We look to be upgrading them in five buildings and upgrading fire alarms at Wobonzie and some additional elementary schools. The toilet partitions have been on the list probably for the last 10 years at some of our schools, where the, these are the metal partitions that we've been band-aiding by either putting new sheet metal across them or painting and so forth. This is a complete replacement of those and move to the style partition that we have been using in our newer schools. the style partition that we have been using in our newer schools. Scheduled work, again, those things, safety-related, and also equipment-related. The roof replacement, we still have monies for those roofs that need to be replaced during this time period. This is not only deferred roofing that we'll be doing, but we will be keeping up with our roofing during these four years. The synthetic turf at Matia will be 12 years old, and that gets evaluated every year as far as wear and tear. Usually, they'll tell you between 10 and 15 years you need to replace that turf. We build it into the 2021 detail. If it doesn't need to be replaced, we'll defer that money and do some other things in 2021, but then build it into 2022 or future. And also Phase 2 of the Wobonzie tennis courts.
We are spending less in fiscal year 21 and in fiscal year 22, but that is a conservative estimate of what's going to be available. It depends upon what the state comes through with the continued effort to fund schools through evidence-based funding, and depends upon what the cabinet and the superintendent's work is regarding some of the other areas of evidence-based funding that we need to consider, which is around the focus of student achievement and bringing up scores and meeting some needs in the classroom. So we're kind of walking that balance. If more money's available, we certainly will dedicate it to projects. In fiscal year 2022, again, it's just deferred, which is, again, our part of Engage session and our scheduled work. And you can see that we're spending $6.3 million. With the deferred, it's roofing, asphalt, and controls. And I think in the summary sheet, you'll see we put a pretty good dent at the end of the four years on some of the areas of the deferred maintenance, but not on all of the areas.
And again, specific projects are listed there for 2022. More so, we're able to identify the deferred lists. We'll be replacing the slope roofs at Cowshaw and Steck, flat roofs at Hill, and we'll start some roof replacement at Wobonzie. Asphalt replacement will be as needed. We'll still replacing controls at Georgetown and Kendall. The scheduled work, again, all relates to those safety items and any equipment replacement as needed. And again, there's money in the schedule for roofing that gets identified to be replaced during 2022. This slide talks about a four-year summary. As you can see, we're spending over $34 million. Our special projects, $9 million was spent there. In deferred, we hit and did work for roofing, asphalt, control systems, fire alarm, masonry, projects at gym floor at Wobonzie, and tile floors at Wobonzie, and the bathroom partitions at numerous schools. Scheduled, again, relates to our roof leaks and any safety-related items, as well as replacing grounds equipment, security equipment, HVAC, and plumbing that's needed. It also includes almost $2.8 million in roofing that's identified during this four-year period, as well as the softball fence and tennis courts at Wobonzie, masonry that gets identified during the four-year period, and the synthetic turf at Matia.
So when you look at the $34 million that we're putting towards our deferred and our special projects and our scheduled, that's close to the $8.5 million EMG said that we should be spending annually on our facilities for a district this size. I think we're able to put a dent in our roofing and our asphalt because we're in this plan, we're not focusing in on the aesthetics of the district. We're focusing in on the real infrastructure of the district. So on the summary sheet, what you can see is that at the end of the four years, we hope to have completed $8.5 million worth of currently deferred roofing, and we'll have $2.7, almost $2.8 million of new roofing fall onto. So those are projects that we aren't going to be able to get to, that will be added to the list. I want to point out that in addition to the $8.5 million that we're putting towards the deferred, we are doing other roof work. So that number would have been larger than that, but there is going to be some roofs that are going to be delayed in getting completed. The upside to that is they're not going to be as delayed as our currently deferred work. So we'll be taking roofs that should have been done six, seven, eight years ago and getting them done, and having some roofs that are going to be a year, two, or three out. You can see from our masonry, we'll be spending $1.006, and we'll have $500,000 worth of deferred masonry fall onto the list, given the EMG survey. In asphalt, we'll be fixing $3.7 million worth of asphalt. We will not be able to get $3.5 million worth of existing deferred asphalt, and we will have $370,000 of deferred asphalt come on. And we felt comfortable with that because we've been able to maintain our asphalt with patches. And is it necessarily attractive or the best look when you drive up to the buildings? No, but we can patch those and feel that they're safe. You can see with the HVAC, we'll be spending almost $2.3 million on deferred. There's $1.004 that we will not be able to address, and there's $123,000 that is going to come on to the deferred. And Mr. DePaul and I talked about the HVAC. We went back and forth between the EMG study, boilers that were replaced in the district in the last few years, which were a part of that, and a recent boiler inspection where we took some of the older boilers apart, and they told us that we've got a number of years left on them. Even though they would be beyond their useful life, we should be able to get five or six more years out of them. So we felt that that was good. And then you can see the general projects. We call those the general projects because it's hard to categorize where you're going to put new gym floors and maybe new bleachers that are in need of repair. We're going to be spending $1.005. There'll be $1.002 almost that we won't be able to address. There's $200,000 that will fall on. So there's still a number of deferred items at the end of this four-year project that are going to need to be completed, but we will be in much better shape when you look at the building envelope, the infrastructure, the heating and cooling of the systems. And then finally, I want to point out that, you know, this really does not address the aesthetics like EMG thought we should address them, and we've never addressed our carpet and our painting and our ceiling tiles like EMG recommended on a annual, you know, end-of-life cycle where you're just going and you replace all of the ceiling tiles. When ceiling tiles are bad, we'll replace the ten that are bad in that classroom, and if the rest are good, we'll move on to the next classroom. Mr. DePaul, you want to say anything about that?
And again, this doesn't address any unforeseen issues, similar to the Fisher slap and rerouting of the Wobonzie pool sump pump discharge that also identified some bad electric conduits and wires that we had to get fixed. So similar to your house, when those items come up, there's projects that you think you're going to do, you just can't get to.
That was another good part of our discussion. How much do we leave in contingency, or do we just swap out projects when something unforeseen happens?
Basically, in summary, by following this deferred maintenance plan, all currently deferred roofing, masonry, and fire alarm system upgrades will be completed. We'll have about 50% of our currently deferred asphalt completed. 60% of our currently deferred controls will be updated. We also were able to complete various projects, as mentioned before, the elementary air conditioning, updating of our intercommon classroom locks, repair of the Wobonzie tennis courts, Wobonzie gym floors, replacement of some Wobonzie tile floors, replacement of the Matia synthetic turf, and replacement of worn-out bathroom partitions. And again, it's important to note that we do have sufficient funds built into this forecast to replace roofs identified during the four-year period of time.
Questions?
Mr. Rezak, you still with us?
Yes.
Any questions?
No, thank you for the report. The board is, during their evaluation, and some asked the administration to provide a detailed report, and this is an excellent roadmap for everyone in the community and the schools to see where we're going in terms of our maintenance. So thank you so much.
Mr. Rezak?
Just a quick question. The elementary AC, you have it on there for the, what is it, the 2020 work? Looks like that's the final stage, right, and that's the LMC. Remind me again, did we, or it depends by building, because this could depend by building, but the music and art room that are usually in that lunchroom or cafeteria or multipurpose room hallway, is that something we were doing, or it depends if they fall between the double doors where it's air-conditioned or not?
The music and art rooms are included.
Oh, they are included, okay.
They're in the fiscal year 2019.
Okay. Oh, great. Okay.
In that year, we're doing all the large-size classrooms in the elementary buildings.
Okay, great. Just because I wanted to say this word, leaky walls, I'm assuming that's just what it is, leaky walls, okay. And then flexibility, Jay, you had mentioned. Did we kind of land on, you know, let's just have a solid roadmap, and then if things do need to be given more attention, then that's where we'll just swap out depending on? Okay. So that's kind of the...
Exactly.
Okay. All right. That's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you for the comprehensive plan. It's really appreciative. Just a couple, one comment. It's refreshing to really see the detail given to the deferred, the attention to the deferred. And so you can see as we go throughout the years that some of those, you can see less and less having to be spent on the deferred because we're able to take advantage of going ahead and getting some projects taken care of that we might not have. So thank you for the attention to that. Question, just from, if you can share, you talked about Fund 60, and we've discussed that before. Can you just give us a reminder on where Fund 60 can be spent versus where it cannot be applicable, just as a reminder?
Yeah. Fund 60 has to be spent on our facilities and our infrastructure. And for a number of years, we put all of our developer contributions with a new subdivision, brought students to the district. The formula allows us to collect some revenue to educate those students. We've put that into Fund 60. Any sale of our property, we've put into Fund 60. And the goal was to pay off our debt certificates, which we did just recently. So having paid those off, that obligation is no longer there. We've got money now that's remaining in Fund 60, and any additional money that goes into Fund 60 can be used for these projects, which is kind of what we've been talking about for a number of years, and we finally reached that place.
Thank you. I just wanted to be sure that we had that reminder as we saw some of the different conversations from Engage 2 and 4, what could, where we could use Fund 60 versus where we couldn't. Thank you.
It sounds like we're getting to a place where maybe not so many roofs will be leaking before we decide to fix them, which is really good news. It sounds like we're trying to increase our chipping away, and I was really pleased with that. So going forward from there, your wish would be to still spend about $8 million a year on maintenance. And so is that correct, or are you actually looking for something more in order to start to address the aesthetics in a different way?
You know, the EMG study said we should be spending about $8.5 million. And that's for existing work and looking forward, not the deferred. If we handle our aesthetics like we've always handled them, that frees up more money for the deferred projects. You know, a classic example is this building here. This carpet is as old as this building is, and, you know, there's no plan to replace this carpet in the future, but I can guarantee you it's beyond its useful life. The EMG study says that we should probably go in here and replace this carpet. We would prefer to put that towards higher prioritized items. So if we had $8.5 million, it would be remarkable, and we would be able to do more looking forward. And the deferred items that are remaining and the deferred items that are falling on during this four-year period of time, we would be able to put a bigger dent into those items.
Okay. All right. Thanks, you guys.
So thanks for the information. I think it's a very critical list of items, and when you look at this and you realize how much has been deferred over the years, it's kind of scary, like to hear the controls from 1975 at Wobonzie. I mean, that's ridiculous, actually. And, you know, leaks at 35 buildings or whatever. So, I mean, this is definitely something we have to take care of, and if we don't, it's not a pretty picture at all. So I'm glad that we're proposing this and looking at spending the money here to get some of this addressed, so.
Surprised. Anything else?
I just want to clarify. We don't have leaks at 35 buildings currently, do we?
When leaks are identified, we have a leak process where we fix them. But I can tell you that sometime during the past year, we've had a leak at 35 buildings.
Okay. See, I read that as you're going to look at all of our buildings and go, which ones have leaks? But I didn't. Wow, okay.
No worries. There is a leak process.
I'm good. Good. I just wanted some clarification.
Do wet students, like...
There's a leak mitigation process.
Are they allowed to leave early?
One last thing on this. I don't, in looking at this, it doesn't look like we're doing enough. We've got a $10 million deferred maintenance hole, and if we are supposed to be spending in our annual spend, 6.5 on average, we're taking that 6.5 and putting it to deferred payments, and so we're continuing to defer. So we're deferring, and we're catching up. But according to my calculation, so if you look at this one, the slide 2019, right? And tell me if I'm right or wrong on this, but we're supposed to be spending about 6.5 a year. And on our schedule, we're spending 1.3. So we've got a deferred of 4 mil. And so we'll keep piling on to the deferred. And if that is true and accurate, then after these four years, just on that, what we should be spending that 6.5, we're going to come out with about a 12.9 deferred list. And that's just upon our average spend of 6.5. That doesn't consider the consultant's recommendation for the 8.5, and that's the consultant recommended on average. If you look at the consultant's recommended on the actuals, they had us spending like $11 million in some of these years based on...
16 in some.
...our buildings and whatnot. So really, our deferred list, even with all this effort, the way I look at it, our deferred list is going to grow to 12.9 based on our spend, or up to 25 mil based on the actual spend according to our consultant. So we might be digging a bigger hole, but we're not digging as fast.
You bring up a good point, and I think the difference between the consultant's recommendation and where we're at is our efforts to focus on the critical systems and to ignore the aesthetics. So when you look at the deficit, the difference between the schedule and, you know, what we would have replaced, there's probably some carpet in there that we would have replaced throughout the district that we're not going to replace. The carpet's going to look less attractive in the effort to seal the leaky roofs and fix the masonry issues.
I got the consultant aesthetic part of it, but is it right that we should be spending 6.5 in 2019, and we're spending 1.3? But is it right that we should be spending 6.5 in 2019 and we're spending 1.3 on our regular maintenance? Not the deferred, not the capital? We should be spending 6.5 on our regular, just to maintain where we're at?
When we, two years ago, when the consultant gave us their study, we went through it and we looked at what their report had to say. And there was two things that stood out, Todd and I. The first was what they felt we needed to do in the areas of aesthetics. And we thought if we did our area of aesthetics, we could cut that down to four and a half or five and a half million dollars. So, we felt, you know, like they were elevated in those areas. As the economy has changed and materials have become more expensive, Todd can tell you that in some of their items, they're, they undervalued what it costs to put a boiler in. So, is six and a half million dollars a solid number? I think it's in the ballpark. If we had five and a half or six annually, yeah, we could, we'd be in better shape. Are we spending less on our schedule? Absolutely, to catch up on those critical systems.
What's in our budget for...
The Fund 20 is six and a half million dollars. That has not typically been the case.
Oh, yeah, I agree. I understand, yep.
That's how we, you know, we fell into the deferred list during the recession. We spent, on average, three and a half million. And there was one year we spent a million and a half. And that's how we balanced our budget.
Understood. Thank you. Any other questions? Thanks for your time, guys.
Thank you.
Next on our list is Portrait of a Graduate. All by yourself today?
All by myself tonight. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to share with you an exciting new project that we're beginning very soon called Portrait of a Graduate. Both Dr. Sullivan and Janet Buleo, as well as Lisa Schwartzberry and I are working with Batel for Kids, which is also partnered with Ed Leaders 21 to bring this to 204. Batel for Kids is an organization that has created Portrait of a Graduate. They will help us by facilitating our meetings, providing the background information that's needed, the research that's done, compiling all of the resources and organizing and also helping us with the graphics. So, we're happy to be in partnership with them to work on this project. And tonight, I'm going to explain to you what the Portrait of a Graduate process will be for us. This is directly related to Board Policy 610, which talks about educational philosophy and objection, objectives. Just a little spoiler alert, after we go through the Portrait of a Graduate, we'll probably have to revise that policy because, I don't know if you looked at it, but it is a little bit outdated compared to what we're doing now. So, I'm guessing that our philosophy will change a little bit after Portrait of a Graduate. So, this is a slide that you've seen in a lot of different ways, looking at student A from many years ago and the concentration being math, science, English, and social studies as compared to student B, which would be a student that might currently be in one of our schools. And the skills that we're looking at now are content mastery, as well as critical thinking, communication, collaboration, creativity, better known as the four Cs. So, what is Portrait of a Graduate? What does it do for us? It's an inclusive, I'm going to read this because it's really a nice sentence about what happens. "It's an inclusive, local, and thorough school-community process that identifies and prioritizes the competencies desired in all students by the time they graduate to enhance their chances of success now and in the future." So, many times you hear about the future, but this process will also focus on what's happening for students now and how we can best prepare them to thrive now and in the future. This graphic is a representation of the design team. So, we call our group that's going to meet throughout this next few months, the design team, and really looking at representation from across the whole community. We've been asked, the association and Paul's helping us with providing some teachers who'd be interested in supporting this. Our principals have worked with some high school students to join us, as well as administrators from all three levels, including maybe even preschools, all four levels, as well as members of the community, our faith community, and as you can see, higher education and families throughout. So, this is, we intend to have over 40 representatives from all of these, compiled from all of these factions to help support us and to design what our Portrait of a Graduate will be. The process begins by setting the stage. And again, we're so excited because Batel for Kids is going to facilitate each of these meetings for us. But starts with what will the process be in looking at the research? You know, we showed you the graphic of, or the pictures of student A and student B, but really explaining why it's necessary to look at Portrait of a Graduate now to this group that's going to work called the design team. The second, and at this time, we'll look at the landscape of many different competencies that have been talked about that are available for students. And the design team will be charged then with thinking about what are their priorities and what are the six top things that they prioritize for students as they graduate from District 204. Meeting two, we'll come back and we'll look at all of these ideas and what our priorities are and really come to some understandings together and discuss how we might visualize this and gather some ideas about what might be a way to look at these competencies and be able to visually represent them so that the community, as well as students, can quickly understand what we're about and what we hope for our students. Then, meeting three will be a draft of looking at what was the consensus on those competencies, as well as our priority, and really looking at three to four visuals that, and I'll show you an example of what that might look like, and looking at, to see what we like about them, what we don't like about them, and how well they represent. Throughout these first three meetings, we'll be looking at some community feedback throughout this in a variety of different ways. But it's important to know that similar to Engage 204 and that process, Janet and her team did a really nice job of creating a site for people to go and understand, even if they weren't attending the meetings. The same thing will happen throughout this process, is there'll be ongoing communications to the community about how this is working and ways for them to provide feedback along the way as well. And then, our final meeting will be to get feedback and to refine our visual and make a decision as to this is the one that we're going to recommend to the board. One example of visual is this one from Ketterington. And if you look at it, the five competencies that are listed there are the priorities for that institution, as well as the graphic on the side. This is how they wanted to represent what they wanted for their graduates with a little bit of verbiage on the side to help explain that. Again, this is an example. This is not necessarily what ours would look like, but it is helpful to see a visual as to what our end product might be. So, as we go through the process, we go through those four meetings. What are the results and what happens with them? The first thing is that Batel for Kids will provide us with a full report on the process. So, for anyone who wasn't able to attend or for those of us that want to refer back to it, we'll have a full report on the process, how it worked, what was the feedback, how people submitted their priorities. It's a very lengthy report, but it will be very helpful for us in the future. We would come back to the board to request your approval for the visual that's designed because we want you to have a part in this. And we also want you to, it is your goal to have the philosophy and the objectives for students as they graduate. So, we really want this to represent your thoughts as well. Then, we would use this visual to help guide and connect our work. So, based on what the competencies that we think are the highest priority, that would really direct our work. So, if you look at, for instance, in the curriculum and instruction department, if one of the competencies, and I think if you look back at this, was critical thinkers that would reinforce our need to support students and provide them with opportunities in all of their coursework, to think critically, to look at problems and to solve them and work through them. So, this would be, one way that we would use it to, would be to guide and connect our work as we move forward. And then, it's also a nice graphic to share across the district and with the community to let everyone know what District 204 is about, what we hope for our students, and what our goal is for our students as they work through our system and move to graduation. That was a quick rundown of Portrait of a Graduate. Did you have any questions?
Mr. Rezak?
I guess a question and a comment. The only portrait of a graduate in my mind in District 204 was going to college. The workforce and research and literature is now indicating that not all students need to go to college, especially in the technological field, technology fields, in order to be successful and/or make a lot of money. Do you see the process perhaps redefining a community's perception of what a graduate is and what it means to be successful?
I think certainly it could be a tool to communicate that. I think members of our community already know that. I think there are some representatives from local businesses that are searching for students, not necessarily with a college degree, but with some of these work skills that we've talked about, with the four Cs and the soft skills that you've heard so much about. So, I think this process will help us clearly define, you know, we've talked a lot about future-ready, but this will help us clearly define what that means for us and what we want for our students and then guide our work towards that. And what better way to help students but to be able to communicate that to the community, as well as families throughout, so that they know what the goal is for the students as well?
But I guess my comment with that is I think a lot of students feel the pressure to go to college. And a lot of our social and emotional issues might be addressed if our students know that there's many different opportunities for them to be successful. That's my comment. That's all I have, Mr. Cruz.
Thank you.
So, if I could just follow up on that, because I kind of think I, you know, we live in a district, which is a great thing, that everybody wants to do very well, whether it be GPA or ACT/SAT scores, because it seems like students and parents alike want their kids to go to the best college and have the best opportunities, which I get and I support. But I guess my question on this is, and I'm assuming we're doing this because of Essa and everything else, is, is this what we hope as a board and as a district and as schools and teachers? This is essentially outlining or framing what we hope our students are equipped with once they leave our district, correct? Is that kind of what this is?
Certainly.
Okay. So, I guess in that regards, how will this be utilized? Because it's one thing to create a portrait of a graduate, which I think is wonderful because I think oftentimes we focus too much on test scores, like we say, instead of life skills and passions and lifelong learners and all that stuff and social-emotional skills and everything else. But I guess, is there a way, and maybe I'm overthinking this, but is there a way in which we could utilize this to help those students that may be lacking in a certain area? And what I mean by that is, okay, their grade point average might not be the best. But, you know what? If you position yourself this way and you've done this and this and this, I mean, is this just more of a snapshot of what we hope our students are equipped with? Or is this also going to be used in the individual student level to help them improve as an individual student? Does that make sense? Or maybe I'm overthinking it?
I don't see it as turning these competencies into a report card. I don't see it as that. I look at it as, we have our mission statement and we have board goals. This is another level to help define what those things mean for our students. And so, as we, so when you have these competencies and you know what the focus for student learning should be based on what these priorities are, then we can develop programs. We can help students understand that, we can help develop these skills in students. So, you know, when you talk about students, somebody wants to do very well, we're somewhat redefining what very well means through this. So, there are, as you look, there are many different skills that make someone successful because there are so many different careers and so many, when you look at all of the, you know, I think they're going to share with us 15 different skill sets and things like that that you need, but not all of them are important for each and every career. So, what we intend to do and what we are doing with students is help them understand where their strengths lie and how does that match with what a future career could be? So...
So, they could say I'm a global citizen because I've helped out locally and globally on these efforts and volunteering and blah, blah, blah. Okay, all right.
Which is a wonderful skill set that can be certainly applicable for a career and for a successful future. So, those are the types of things that we'll communicate with students. I don't think we'll take these competencies and drill them down to areas for students, but I think we'll help them understand that these, some of these competencies and how they lead to a future career and how we can support them in that.
Ms. Dunning?
Thank you. One quick comment and then question. Having some, having done some work with workforce development, you see many of these critical types of skills being ones that are desired in many, many different companies. You see a number of states and school districts having plans to look at these, to ensure these competencies. So, I appreciate us looking and being assertive in helping to ensure our students are well-rounded along with the importance of the, that we all stress on the academic portion. Quick question, as far as we're looking at the Portrait of a Graduate, so when and how do we see the integration prior to high school? If you can just share that, just a little bit more, what that integration looks like so that as they get to high school and closer to that?
Sure. So, the Portrait of a Graduate looks at post. So, once you have what you want at post, it's just like any learning goal. Once you have what you want at the end, you can backtrack and backward plan to help support students to get there. Because obviously, the skill sets that are needed for a successful life are not just going to be taught in those four years at high school. So, we'll start, we'll backtrack all the way down to pre-K. Just like we, if you've looked at our personalized learning, you know, we want students to be able to use digital resources and things like that. Our preschool uses digital resources and has a maker space in some of the classrooms. And then, you've seen some of the maker spaces in our elementary. And then, they're a little bit higher level at our middle school and things like that. So, we'll use this to backward plan in order to support students all along the way so that it's a, it's a nice sequence and progression for them.
That's a great explanation of just looking at that, that interaction with others, the maker spaces. So, thank you.
Ms. Price?
None.
No questions?
Well, I guess, I'm trying to picture it. And so, what I'm seeing though is, you know, the social-emotional piece would become possibly more prominent because so many of these soft skills have to do with that. So, I assume we have a plan to remove some things out of the current system in order to replace and support those soft skills. Is that what is going forward, I guess?
I think they're in partnership. So, you know, first of all, we don't know what the end result is going to be. We haven't started this process. We haven't started this process yet with Portrait of a Graduate. So, you know, we'll have a better understanding once we know what our priorities are. But the soft skills or the four Cs really are in partnership with math skills. And problem, you know, critical thinking, collaborating, and communicating are all great skills for, to learn math. And so that's what we would look at, or some of these, we wouldn't want to do social-emotional learning outside of everything else because it should be embedded within everything that we do. And so that's the same thing I would look at, some of these skills that we're talking about would be embedded in everything that we do. And once we have, know what our priorities are, we can work and help support in embedding those and helping students see how those are beneficial for traditional subjects as well as for life.
Okay. Thanks.
So I think we've talked about these kind of skills and having the importance of our graduates demonstrate them. So I was, when I first looked at this, I'm like, we're just working on getting a visual. But it's really way more than a visual. It's a strategy, a vision for our students and our curriculum to build our students into that. So I welcome this. I think it's a very important set of material that will really provide great guidance to our district, so.
It should be a good process, good conversations along the way.
I would like the focus on the policy anticipation of possibly changing it. I do think we need to look at though, how it touches on other areas as well. You know, we've got our district goal that you alluded to, help all students grow socially, emotionally, and academically. Well, this is gonna, you know, impact that possibly. And we've got measurables under there. Are we gonna have measurables under there, under the portrait? You know, this really, the portrait deals with all students. How does that interact with, you know, individual personal plans? So I like seeing how, I anticipate and I like seeing how this is gonna kind of integrate with our current system. I like the interplay in it. So I'm encouraged. I look forward to it.
Can I just say, I'd just like at Engage 204, we're hoping that board members will come to these meetings and watch what happens because the product will then come to you for approval. But we certainly would want and encourage you to take part and see what happens at those meetings. So we anticipate four meetings and being done after that and bringing that final product to the board.
And just look at Policy 610. Policy 610 has a lot of some of these things that are discussed, but also some might not make the final cut too, so.
Right.
Quick question. So we have a number of different parts and participants in the process. So, community members, I see, and families. Are we going to, will be sharing this, the dates and things so that community members can be aware?
We've already begun that process in terms of reaching out, especially to some of the community leaders, the faith leaders, the faith community, to try to make sure that we've got a representative group of folks. And we're working on, Paul's helping us with teachers and working on the, you know, students and the other side as well. So they recommend that you have kind of a half and half, right? Half outside of the district and half in as part of this process, so.
It'll, the communication will be similar to Engage 204.
Anything else? Thanks.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is a discussion on Technology Services Update. We're gonna have more than one person present.
We are. Let's see if my tech skills are up to par for...
You might have to introduce yourself, Mr. Smith.
I will, indeed. Thank you so much.
Is this your first presentation?
It is. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to present to the board on the status of the academic year. I'm gonna have some colleagues joining us as well, Andrew Peterman and Brian Grinston. And we also have John in the back, who I appreciate your work, as well as Betsy, and Anu, and her mother has joined us as well, which is a great to have her presence with us as well.
Welcome.
We're starting with a laugh. That's great. I'm excited about that. So again, I'll present to you our 2017-2018 annual update, as well as our future forecast of where we're going for this current academic year and beyond. We'll start with some introductions, so again, faces to names and associated, and then move into our academic year. So everyone loves pictures, so I thought I'd present to you some photos here so you know who your executive leadership team and extended leadership team are. Myself, I've talked about Andrew and Ms. Anu as well. Anu is our lifeblood within the Technology Services Department to keep our purchasing and all of our things moving on the rails. So I wanted to make sure and give her a very loud thank you, especially as we've gone through some purchasing fun this past summer. To Brian's team for support services, Betsy and Brian have been integral, as well as every member of their team, in making sure we have a successful Chromebook deployment, as well as all of our computers within our schools for our students. There have been many things this summer that had the potential for it to not complete on time, but they have done an amazing job of keeping everything together and making sure that our students can be successful, as well as our teachers in the classrooms. Brian Storbl, who's not with us, is our coordinator for management information systems, specifically the eSchool Plus system and several other databases that were within the environment. And Kent Vanderpeluk, who's also our network server and telecommunications coordinator, who makes sure that you can connect to the Wi-Fi in the building. That's the number one thing to remember and make calls within the district.
I'm glad to see you guys all have titles, because I've always just called you the tech people.
Hey, you know what? We respond to anything. We respond to anything. Hey, you sometimes works too, so that's not a problem.
We've probably been called worse since we've been here.
We have. We have. We have, indeed, indeed. So Stan previously had provided to you the forecast for the 2017-18 academic year, and I wanted to just recall those points just for your reference, on the largest being the one-to-one Chromebook implementation for high schools, as well as the elementary pilot for grades two through five. Several others included a regular recurrence about the strategies to address the technology gap, as well as how to simplify and streamline access to digital resources for our students and staff. And as with anything technology, as we've heard from Kathy in her presentation, there's obviously always continued infrastructure growth and needs for refresh within our environment. So I wanted to give you just a quick overlay. I know there's a lot of information on this slide, but really to take you from when the Chromebook implementation first started back in the fall of 2014 with a pilot of one-to-one at three middle schools, all the way through until the start of this fall 2018 cycle, we've gone from supporting just under 1,300 devices within our environment to 27,800 devices across the district. That's a massive, massive number of devices to make sure are running at one given time. We were monitoring the environment to make sure to see how many students or how many devices were connecting concurrently at one time. And we reached 21,000 this week of actual devices, all engaged at the exact same time on our network. That's an amazing feat in terms of the district and its commitment to the excellence for our students and for the teachers as well. To call out for you, the references, we are now one-to-one at our high school, middle school, as well as in elementary two through five. And K1, not to throw you off, but the 2.6 to 1 reference on devices is made up for carts, as well as Chromebook carts that provide that access for one-to-one within the K1 environment. So when teachers are using those in the classroom, they request a cart and then have that available for all students to use. We did implement a program this year for our K1 students, which is called Pictograph or Picture-Based Login, to help our teachers, especially our students too, who may not be able to recall a 12-digit password, whether it's a mixture of numbers and letters, we wanted them to focus more on the learning experience and using the technology than the password. So they get to pick four pictures. And what we found, which was an exciting process, I sat down with a student who wanted me to call him Diesel, and that wasn't his real name, but he really wanted me to call him Diesel. So I worked with Diesel on selecting his four pictures. We went through 33 screens to find Pokemon and Darth Vader and associated characters. So it was a great experience to meet with our students and see how they use the technology in the classroom, and to get excited about technology as well. This is the lovely technology slide, which we love numbers, so I wanted to make sure and share for you what we have of overall devices within the district. And I referenced earlier the 27,800 Chromebooks. But we also have 6,300 laptops and desktops, as well as 1,000 iPads. For our staff, we have just under 4,000 devices per staff as well. Now, these don't count the personal devices that they bring into the district for their cell phones and other technologies that are connecting to the network. The reason I mention that is, looking at the overall flurry of our infrastructure to support on average, you'll see on an upcoming slide, a significant amount of concurrent devices within the space. And we do that with a very slim amount of network bandwidth that, when you compare that to other districts, we're actually running very optimal in terms of our space. So I wanted to make sure to call that piece out. You'll see on the left-hand side that I've referenced that our staff one-to-one deployments are in year four of three. That's not a typo. Just want to make sure to call that out, that we are entering into the fourth year. We've completed the third year. And those devices are still in their usable life within the three-year plan. But we'll be coming forward with a recommendation for how we proceed forward for the staff device replacements, as well as for our one-to-one model for our students. So usable life on a Chromebook, just as a reminder from the proposal, is a three-year timeline. And we're entering into that refresh cycle, which will be happening in the next year for our middle school students. So I just wanted to make sure to call those pieces out for you. Our internet plan, you've seen this slide probably multiple years, year after year, of what is our bandwidth utilization and understanding how we use our internet connection. The most significant one at the bottom is also not a typo. We did go from 2.5 gigs of traffic, available traffic on July 2017. We did drop that down in 2018, based on our overall usage, with some savings for our network package. We're finding that, again, as we've integrated more Chromebooks into the environment, we have an opportunity that we may need to increase that again. But we do have the flexibility within our contract to expand that as needed, as devices are gaining onto the environment. But we're definitely nowhere near the ceiling at this point, where it's a risk of not being able to provide services. And we are in the planning process right now for our internet and WAN connections, as well as for our firewall services. We'll have those coming to the board as well, once we have those recommendations identified. To call out the great work again, Dr. Sullivan has brought up a number of times the great things that are happening within our tech squads at their presentation at ISTI this year. One of the common threads that I heard at this presentation afterwards is what happens to the tech squads now that I'm out of middle school and going into high school. I don't want to stop working on this. And so we listened loud and clear to that message, and we're working with Curriculum Instruction to identify opportunities, to provide additional opportunities at the high school level, as well as on our elementary level. It was really exciting. Andrew and I went into Georgetown to really look at how students were using the devices. But we were also hearing from six and seven-year-olds who wanted to help their peers and help others use the technology. So we saw these little tech squads starting to form on their own in a very natural way. Down to, how do you use a mouse, was something that the students were starting to work together on. So we're gonna put together a recommendation for how we can spur this up in the elementary schools, mirroring the middle school program, but doing a different shift at the high school level to focus more on internships, training opportunities, and partnerships with businesses in the area, as well as through some of our corporate partners as well. The other piece that we've noticed as an opportunity is working directly with Technology Services. We have technology staff in each of the schools and having a partnership opportunity where students can shadow a technology staff member or provide additional opportunities to see how they can engage with technology as a way of working together and collaboration. One of the things I consistently and regularly hear is, what's your vision? What's next? What's happening? And I think if I heard that, I would be having a crystal ball in front of the table. And so I hope I can invite you into that crystal ball to see kind of where we're headed in our recommendations for moving forward. The first I wanted to call out is a reminder about our home connectivity and digital divide. This is a common, common statement that we want to make sure we keep bringing forward to the community, not just in presentations like this, but also working with our school counselors to make this information available for parents and families. Both Comcast and AT&amp;T offer two programs, one through Internet Essentials and one through Access from AT&amp;T that provide reduced-cost internet access for parents and families, with a new offering from Comcast to also provide access to a computer at a reduced rate. It's a significant savings over a traditional cost of a computer, and it's a strong device that can give families access to those resources. I've highlighted Naperville and Aurora in the lower section for you because they offer wireless hotspot loner devices for families who don't have internet access at home. We've found, bless you, we've found that the Chromebooks can be a great opportunity for not only the students in school, but also for the families when they come home with that device. And so this becomes a nice opportunity for them to check out a device and not necessarily have internet access at their home. This information is accurate as of August 28th, and I've asked Comcast and AT&amp;T to provide additional information and resources so that we can provide those to our families if requested as well. Infrastructure and cybersecurity is something that you're probably hearing about on a regular basis, not just in a school district environment, but for yourself as well. It's to note that if you see the dots on the screen, and they're kind of tiny on this, but if you look at the blue marks and the red marks, red marks indicate major breaches of data and access within K-12 environments. Blue marks are leaks of information, where someone had given out information that was unintended for a district. In the past three years, there's been 356 incidents that were reported in K-12 organizations with a rise increase of 300% year-over-year against a K-12 environment. The reason for that, it's an easy access opportunity for a large set of data within a K-12 environment. So our focus has been and will continue to be, and will move moving forward, also be a focus for this organization to make sure that we provide a stable, yet secure environment that also gives access to those resources. And we've not had reported cybersecurity incidents within the district, or any opportunities in which that's come forward for reporting. We've joined the Multi-State Information Analysis Center, MSISAC, because we also love our acronyms within education. It's a connection to Homeland Security should we have any form of a breach or an intervention that we need support from the FBI or any other organizations from the technology side that will have access to those resources. They've informed us of under 12 hours that we'd have access to individuals to provide that. As I mentioned earlier, on average during a given day, we have 24,000 devices on our wireless network, and that includes Chromebooks, laptops, cell phones, personal devices, and other resources. And as part of our commitment to that, we're working on re-engaging with the Trusted Learning Environment Seal, which requires us to look holistically at not only our procedures and our practices and guidelines, but also our policies and the things that we place and put forward as our priorities within the Technology Services Department. So one of the things you may have noticed in our emails, we now include a header across the top that includes a cautionary notice when you have email that you're receiving from outside of the district. This is to help alert you to the fact that you may not be getting an email that's actually saying it's from someone that actually isn't that original person that you intended to from the district. A key area that's really important to me, that's also becoming a growing awareness, is the scorecarding and operational health. We're, we can easily bring you numbers and talk about the percentages of growth and talk about how much bandwidth we use. But understanding the health of the organization is very similar to Kathy's presentation a moment ago, about understanding the health of our organization and what's necessary beyond the point of just being operational. So as an example, how do we know, what is the healthy definition for the experience when using our wireless services within the district? What does that definition look like? And we need to ask others within the district to provide us feedback on that experience. So it's opening our doors to getting feedback, not only from district staff, but also our students, our parents, and the community about the services that they receive. This will be an annual report that's brought to the board as part of our technology update, so that A, you have the opportunity to see where we are within our technology planning process, but also what are our growth milestones and areas that we can improve, not only those that we see within the Technology Services Department, but also those that we see from our community, as well as from our students. A major area of growth for Technology Services is expansion of the support services that we provide specifically for technology at the moment. We use a technology-focused help desk software to manage our tickets or cases that come into the organization, and we're working on partnerships and collaboration with Curriculum Instruction, Human Resources, and other teams within the district to provide a single centralized source of support. So you don't need to go to four or five different locations to find what you need to get support, but instead you go to one location to engage, to get help, whether it's with your classroom, whether it's with your technology, whether it's with Human Resources, or any of the other services. Our goal with this is to channel our documentation and instructions in a single location to make it easier for people to find what they need, when they need it, a timely fashion around the clock, 24/7. This is a little funny little cartoon on the side here, one fish, two fish, clicked fish, data breach. You'll see these type of quote-unquote "fun" cartoons that will appear in different areas in the district to remind people about their role in protecting not only the district, but their students and themselves from attacks. As we talked about, there were 365 incidents previously that have occurred in the past three years. 91% of them began with an email. They started with an individual click from an email that opened up the network, or a reply to a message that provided credentials. And so this is an area that is very important for us to make sure that we're educating our users, as well as the community, about how to appropriately and effectively use email. The one that we're working on right now is a reporting of spam button that will actually be within the Outlook client, where if you suspect that you have an email that you're not sure of, you can click one button. It will notify tech services and move it to a spam and junk folder for you, rather than having to take multiple steps to notify us of that. The other piece is that we've added the header, as I mentioned a moment ago, and we're starting some awareness campaigns that will actually provide you with a known phishing message to see, can you identify this message and do you know what to do with it if you receive it? So I thought what I would do is give you an example of one of those communications, so you might see what an example looks like. It will not include the character in the corner with a phishing rod with the at sign, so it won't be as obvious as having that in the corner. But I wanted to make sure that we made it very clear that this was indeed a phishing email. Our goal is that we know that emails are harder and harder to determine when they're legitimate or whether or not, especially when they come from outside sources. So our hope is that you learn some of the techniques and that our users learn some of the techniques to identify an email that's concerning. So in this case, as an example, Microsoft will not send you a notice about the security of your account from an Outlook account. That's a personal account. They also won't monitor your Windows computer and tell you whether or not you are using a valid license. If you called that 800 number, it's not Microsoft that you're calling, and you can take that... If you called that 800 number, it's not Microsoft that you're calling, and you can take that number and type it into Google and find out that it is not indeed Microsoft that you're reaching. If you hovered over the URL, you would see it does not take you to Microsoft.com. And if you hover over the URL for review recent activity, it also does not provide you a link to Microsoft. So our hope is that through educational opportunities like this, when we provide a testing opportunity or a feedback opportunity, if you did click on that, we provide you with some instruction about what happened, what should you look for in future emails. We've tested this with some of our staff within the district and found that in a very short period of time, we've moved our way to 100% in terms of compliance, not clicking on these types of campaigns, and having opportunities to learn in a constructive way that's not meant to be in any way, shape, or form a negative impact, but truly about learning how to appropriately work with technology. The last piece I'll call for, this is also our technology plan, and this aligns again with Kathy and her portrait of a graduate discussion, that our focus on the need for not only the one-to-one initiatives and how we integrate our data and do reporting, but also our connectivity and access, is about how we really are engaging with personalized student learning. We've engaged that from the first level, talking about one-to-one devices, but what does that next step look like? And the framework we're looking at using is the Future Ready Schools and Technology Leaders approach, to really provide us a strategic direction about the needs and values and the approaches that we need to take, not only as a department, but also a district. This would be a five-stage development that includes collaboration across administrators, teachers, our staff, and students, parents, and community, because each one of those members and constituents represents a very important voice to the overall development of that plan. Again, that would come forward to the board as a recommendation, especially as we evaluate the funding and what's needed in order to accomplish some of those tasks within the current budget framework. Office 365 is something you may use at home or work in other, use in other locations. Currently, the district provides Exchange, which is our email services within the district. We make multiple investments in our spam and email defenses to make sure that we're protecting our users, as well as our students. In a given day, we, on average, process about 173,500 emails, and block about 26% of those from ever hitting someone's inbox, because they either present malware, or phishing, or some type of other negative mechanism that would hit someone's account. Right now, our average costs for supporting that infrastructure internally, not including servers or some of the licensing, is $35,000. We currently have an Office 365, now known as Microsoft 365 subscription, that includes the cost of hosting our email, archival requirements, and also some of the compliance requirements that we're currently doing internally. And our target is to pilot the 0365 for email for 5% of our population, starting this December. Right now, we're in funding discussions with Microsoft to offset our costs, so that can be a supported engagement, to make sure that we can move from our on-premise environment or within the district to a hosted environment. That will not only free up staff resources to ensure that we're allowing some of the automated and threat countermeasures to take place on our behalf, but also free up some of the financial resources that we have to reengage in other areas of our technology plan that we'll bring forward. The overall implementation recommendation would be for completion by summer of 2019, and that would be for our staff, and that would not impact our student users. Our students are obviously in the Gmail platform at the current time. But we do know, both calendars and Google Drive are very important and integral fibers within our teaching community, as well as within our administrative staff and staff as well. So we are evaluating options to make sure that the calendaring functions still exist within the Google space, as well as ensuring that there's safe ways to share and collaborate within the Google Drive space as well. So I wanted to make sure we provide an opportunity, if there's questions or feedback that you'd like to provide, I've obviously asked Andrew and Brian to step with us as well, in case there's some questions that they can answer as well.
So I have a quick, couple of quick questions.
Sure.
Just in the last thing, you were talking about, so we still maintain our own Exchange server?
We do.
Oh, man. Okay, yeah, we need to get, we need to stop.
Appreciate that vote of support.
I mean, yeah, because I've got an IT and consulting background, and it was, yeah, that's a lot of time, that first time and money that we'll save by doing that. You had brought up earlier in the slides, as far as laptops and desktops with staff members, I think that was on page, or slide eight. You know, I know the discussion was always, as we rolled in the one-to-one, I'm assuming, you know, some of these elementary, you know, computer lab rooms, we've eliminated. I'm assuming the laptops and desktops for the staff, I'm assuming most of those are laptops. Are we getting, are we phasing out a lot of those desktops? And because that's, that's a cost in and of itself, too, that, you know, we have to maintain those. So I'm assuming we're doing that, phasing out the desktops?
We are, but I'll let Brian engage with that.
Yeah, we phased out most of the desktops in the areas, but we're talking about secretaries in the front offices, custodians, those areas where a laptop still makes more sense, just from a cost perspective and a support perspective. They're not mobile users, so they have desktops there. The vast majority of the desktops are still in computer labs. We still have curriculum that requires Windows in our high schools and middle schools. So the vast majority of those numbers are in those areas. We've reduced those labs down at middle and high school, as we continue to go through refresh cycles. Are those areas still being used for those purposes, or do we need those with Chromebooks? So those areas and numbers have gone down, but as of right now, the curriculum requires the desktops in those areas.
Okay. And then just one last question. The Chromebooks, I know we're kind of getting at that end-of-life cycle at the middle school. I've been laptop shopping myself, and I was looking, I can't believe how much Chromebooks have changed in the last three years. It's incredible. Do we, are we still kind of staying with that? We expect to get three years out of them, or could we maybe even get four years out of these, some of these newer models? Have you guys seen what's been out there, or talked about, or whatever? Are we still going to just assume it's, let's just stay on a three-year refresh cycle for those?
I'll let Brian tack onto this, but I want to make sure and call up that our forecast on this was for a three-year. We are seeing, they are feeling the third year in certain areas where middle-
Well, middle school's a little rough, yeah.
Right. Middle school students, we find that on some occasions, not always, may drop them into a backpack, or a little more, students are a little more aggressive with sometimes with their devices, even with cases. So the three-year is really truly, I think, a three-year. Would you agree with that, Brian?
Yeah, the middle school ones are well-traveled at this point.
That's a much better way to say it. Thank you. Much more travel.
Through use and back and forth and stuff. No, I've seen the same thing you have, as the models come up, every generation of Chromebook is just a little bit better, but it's still a $200, $300 device. So by the time you get to that third year, it's a matter of what's, what percentage of them are going to make it to the fourth year?
Right.
Is it 98, or is it 88? And that's kind of where we're going. Also, as we see technology improve in the Chromebooks, the cases themselves have also improved over the last three years. So we're getting a little bit better device, and a little bit better case, though we're still more comfortable saying three years and doing an evaluation during that year, two and a half, see where we're really at, and if we can, we would. But right now, I'm not comfortable, based off of our current performance, that they can actually make it into a fourth year.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yep.
Just make a comment. Your energy is really compelling, so I'm really impressed with some of the changes. I love the header at the top of our emails, I thought this was really clever. I love that you're teaching people how to recognize the phishing. I work in a district, and I think about four or five times a day, we get an email from our tech gang, "Please do not open." And I feel so sad for them, because they have to send that out all the time. So I really appreciate all the changes, and welcome aboard.
Thank you, Kathy, I appreciate it.
And I want to say too, just again, I really like the emphasis on the cybersecurity, because like Kathy said, I mean, these hackers are getting more clever every day, and there's things that look legitimate. I mean, even in my workplace, there's stuff that comes over as an invoice, I'm like, oh, okay, I gotta open it. And it's not. So I like that the emphasis you're putting on, you know, what to look for, not just, you know, don't click on this, but what, what are the red flags there? Because that's important for at home and work everywhere, so I like that, too.
I appreciate that. Thanks, Lori. I think the big piece for us is really getting away from saying no, 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 and instead getting to, here's what you should know about.
Right.
And I think that's an important shift, so thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you again for the opportunity, everyone, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And the next on our agenda is Board of Education update. Does anybody have anything to share? Let's start with Mr. Razak.
Just very briefly, I want to reinforce what both you and Karen, Dr. Sullivan, shared in terms of Mayor Fredo. He's going to be sorely missed, the building principal. I often asked him to attend events. Not only did he officiate events, but I asked him to walk to school, I asked him to jump rope, and Mayor Fredo never said no. He's going to be sorely missed. Second, I know our board goals and district goals are on the district website. So for board members and the general public, they're now displayed on the website, and that's all I have.
Anything else, Peel, Donahue?
Can I just give a shout-out real quick? I had an opportunity to go to, I don't know if you guys saw, I posted it on Twitter, to Patterson Elementary's 25th anniversary. I don't know if you just did, if you stopped by.
I was there, yeah.
Yeah. It was a great event. Mrs. Frost did a wonderful job, and the PTA, and the staff members. Mr. Peterson, the first principal, was there. He came back, and a lot of the, Patterson, Patterson, okay. And a lot of the original staff members came back. It was just a really, really neat event, and families literally hung out the whole day. I mean, they just didn't show up and then go home. They were hanging out the whole day long. It was, it was a wonderful event, so I just wanted to give a shout-out to them.
They did a great job. It was fabulous, yeah.
Yeah.
Donnie? Ms. Price?
Yes, I do have something to share. After months of contemplation, I just want to announce that tonight's meeting will be my last meeting. As some of you know, I've taken on extra responsibilities at work. When I was working part-time, I had the time and energy to devote to this district in a much larger capacity. And then after moving to full-time, the time I was able to spend with school board-related items and events decreased, so much so that I was very happy to nominate Mr. Razak to be the president of the Board of Education. I thought that would relieve some of my commitments, but now upon further reflection, I feel that my responsibilities at work do not allow me to spend the kind of time that I feel needed to be an effective school board member. I'm the type of person that, I'm the type of person that wants to give 100% to my responsibilities, and those of you that know me well, know that is true. And I just feel like I can no longer do that as a board member. I do hope that my constituents and supporters are not disappointed with this decision. I truly have appreciated the support over the years. I have been fortunate to have been on this board nearly eight years, and I am leaving an extremely knowledgeable and highly effective board. I don't know that I've ever worked with a better group of individuals. Believe me when I tell you that this board and this administration has the best interests of students and the community in mind as they contemplate recommendations and make decisions on the 204 community's behalf. You've probably heard people say that this is a thankless job, and it is, for the most part. But I have spoken to many community members out there over the several, last several years, that have taken the time to either write, or to say thank you when I've run into them at the store, or anywhere else in the community. I think many of them know the integrity and passion for this district that we all share, and our work, well, your work, is appreciated. During my time as president, I was committing, I was committed to presiding over a board that would be respectful, even in disagreement, and that every voice was heard. If we were to lead by example, I believe that we were to be the highest example of respect and dignity for our administrators, teachers, and especially our students. Our governance, governance practices would be professional, and we would continue to pursue ways to improve board relations, improve our knowledge of board governance, and grow professionally as board members. As such, the Illinois School Board Association awarded our board the School Board Governance Awards each time we were eligible. And it looks like it will be awarded again under Mr. Razak's leadership, so an early congratulations to all of you. Under Mr. Razak's leadership, there is that same sense of accountability and responsibility, and I thank you for carrying that forward. We become better policymakers because of Mr. Carubis. Mrs. Peel's efforts with school safety recently, and Ms. Donahue's efforts in civic engagement, Ms. Demings' pursuit of equity, and Mr. Rising's effort as our IASB Delicate Assembly Representative every year has made us all better advocates. And there's no question that I will continue to advocate for this district and for public education whenever I can. I have learned much from current and past board members. Over the years, this district and board have become one of the best in the state and in the country. However, it is time for someone else to carry on the good work of this board. As I said before, my responsibilities and my job do not allow me to contribute fully in the way I have become accustomed to, and in the way I would expect a board member to be engaged. I know there's someone out there that can take up that baton and put a new set of eyes and ears on our policies, procedures, and goals as a district, and make this a priority as I could no longer feel I can do. If you're interested in becoming a Board of Education member, you'll be hearing more from the districts on next steps. I will be handing in my formal resignation later this month, but wanted to take the opportunity to inform my fellow board members, teachers, and community of my decision. It has been an honor and pleasure to govern alongside of all of you, and to be a steward and trustee of this community, and to serve this district for almost eight years. To quote the great philosophical bear, Winnie the Pooh, "How lucky I am to have something to make that makes saying goodbye so hard." This is a good decision for me, and I appreciate all of your support in my decision. I wish all of you and my successor the best of luck. And again, thank you for allowing me to serve this great district for the past eight years. Sit down.
You've set the bar pretty high.
Thank you.
Those are good words. I appreciate your service, and you've been a mentor, I think, to all of us. We've all learned from you, and the district will miss your contribution. So I look forward to you helping and continuing to keep the community growing.
Absolutely.
Lori, you're coming in and out, but just so you know, you've been a true steward for the community, and clearly you have been my mentor, and I can't, no words can really thank you enough for everything that you've done for the community and for me as a person. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I also need your exit slips. One last time.
Do you want to wrap up the meeting?
I move to adjourn tonight's meeting? Second.
All approve? Hi.
Hi.
All right. Thank you, Justin.